What's his last name?
Casal.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, special Scarborough Town Council meeting, squaring in ceremony of newly elected officials. It's always a great day when we have newly elected officials and newly elected officers. Jean Marie is going to be a few minutes late, had a matter she had to attend to, but will be here shortly, and I'd ask all of you to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, squaring in of newly elected officials. Town clerk is in charge of this.
Move aside, that would be great.
Move easy, right?
Just like that.
Move aside.
If I could have you raise your right arm and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I.
My God, amen.
I, Paul Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. Okay.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
Continue as citizen thereof.
Continue as citizen thereof.
I, please state your name.
I, Paul Johnson.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the town council.
As a member of the town council.
According to the Constitution and the laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and the laws of the state.
And the charter of the town of Scarborough.
And the charter of the town of Scarborough.
Congratulations. I just need to move.
At this point in the meeting, the town clerk assumes the responsibility of overseeing action on the election of new town officers.
Order number eighteen dash zero seventy-seven is act on the request for nominations and the election of a new town council chair. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations.
I would like to nominate Councilor Peter Hayes.
Second.
Any other? There being none, all those in favor? You can go for yourself.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
To change seats, make sure you grab your.
Thank you. It's a left-handed gavel, but I think it'll work for you.
Well, thank you. I'm delighted to be here, and we'd just like to thank our former chair, Bill, for your service and all that you've done and your leadership over the past years. It's big shoes to fill, so I'm sure I'll have a lot of support and coaching, so glad to be here. Now, it's order number eighteen oh seven eight, which is act on a request for nomination, election of a new town council vice chair, and I guess at this point I'll open it up to nominations.
I nominate Councilor Katie Foley.
Second.
Any discussion, any other nominations? I guess with that, all those in favor? Thank you.
Two unanimous votes right after that.
The vote was seven zero, so thank you. And I guess the next item on the agenda is for a roll call this evening.
Councilor Baybine?
Present.
Councilor Johnson?
Present.
Councilor Foley?
Here.
Councilor Hamel?
Here.
Councilor Donovan?
Here.
Chairman Hayes?
Here.
And with that, at this point, we're going to move into sort of a workshop on a total town council discussion of the downtown Tiff and CEA and just kind of have a conversation among ourselves. We also have some folks in the audience, Steve Brenn is here, that did some of the financial analysis for us and other things, so with that, I think we'll adjourn to the table for the workshop.
...that I've seen indicated that this is a not an audio issue, but a it's a matter of, you know, trying to pin a number, trying to understand, you know, that so we can verify, and I have a sense that the number was somehow, you know, deduced rather than built up, so we know there's confidentiality issue that's been raised about this, that notwithstanding, this is an essential part of the agreement, and also one that was, I think was, the third part of the tentative agreement outline that was set out at the beginning. So I want to just highlight those two at a high level. I don't really know how we weighed into that, but there's a lot of detail behind it, those are the main ones. There are also a number of other things, as I look through the agreement and I read the contract language, there are things missing. I believe there is plenty of detail highlighting upside opportunities for the developer and very, very little detail in terms of how we are going to quantify and evaluate performance requirements on the other side, you know, of the deal, if things are performance hurdles or not. So anyway, that's sort of like the broad overview before we weighed in.
Tom, do you want to address any of those, or any thoughts?
Well, I think it's a fair point that was made, that the modeling is based on the market analysis and the forecast and the desired scenario, kind of after the fact, through the process, we also, not after the fact, but during the process, we also wanted to model, what does the scenario look like without partnership? But we've not gone further and modeled other scenarios, and there's arguably, you know, dozens of scenarios that we could, so we certainly have that ability, but we've not undertaken that task. I think what we have done, though, is to try to guard against those through a number of the performance measures that we've put in place, and also the caps, particularly around residential construction. Those were directly designed to try to shape this thing in a direction and have it land in a general direction that's favorable to us. So that's how we've tried to manage to that desired end. In terms of funding of infrastructure, I do have our town engineer, she's just this week been provided information, the detailed information on those cost takeoffs, and I expect that work will certainly be turned around and available to you before you take a vote. I can let Councilor Donovan speak to this, but that was clearly a discussion point throughout. In fact, you've mentioned the fact that it made its way onto multiple tentative agreements through the course of this process, and frankly, it was just a piece that was kind of missed through the final drafting. I'm not so sure it would, it needs and should be part of the formal CEA anyway, but I think it's something that needs to be verified before final vote and certainly before final signature on the CEA. Based on the numbers that they've been provided to us, and we need to verify those, it seems as though the total reimbursement that they're eligible for is well within their expected infrastructure costs, but we need to verify that, and that's what the exercise is all about. And I guess the last point you made on needing better measures or better ways to quantify and evaluate performance, we spent a lot of time trying to identify the metrics, because no one wants to get into a fight down the road as to whether the performance measures have been satisfied. We think we've identified pretty measurable metrics for us to look at. We've even gone so far to recognize that there may be some dispute and that the council is the arbiter of that dispute, so we've tried to work through those issues, undoubtedly maybe some we haven't entirely identified or addressed, but nothing you mentioned is kind of brand new.
I guess the thought that I have is that the way to check the risks associated with the downside was to determine whether or not the market analyses and cost analyses were done in an appropriate manner, and confirm and verify was a phrase that we used to indicate that we had our eyes wide open. Steve Brenn and Matt Newkaster both issued reports that, and these are highly experienced professionals, that indicated the analysis was solid, so it gave me a sense that we weren't presenting a proposal that was likely to have a large downside risk. Now, scenario two does show kind of a, that's the do-nothing, no deal, and that does show you, that would probably be an example of a worst-case scenario, which again shows the town would make some money off it, but much less as far as measuring performance. I guess the final arbiter of that is the town council. The town manager has to use a good faith determination that they're being met. I think there's always the opportunity to be able to sharpen those up, clarify, make sure if there are questions that the developer has, how are you going to deal with this? Or that we might have, how are you going to do with that? That kind of tweaking is fine with me, because we've, you know, how you get, you look at something a hundred times, and we really have, many of us looked at it repeatedly, and you kind of look past some things. So fresh eyes, I think, have a real benefit, and so as you identify that sort of thing of, what about this? I listen carefully. I take it, I don't take offense, because you can kind of just simply miss something.
Well, I think throughout, the council's been accommodating and has adjusted timeframes and it's been very helpful in terms of giving us, you know, even the time, the short time that we had to deal with in making that, you know, productive for us in terms of their openness and their encouragement for us to talk with others. I would push back again on the idea of a downside risk. Scenario one and scenario two are both upside scenarios, and maybe scenario two is a more downside scenario than scenario one, but they're both still showing a successful project. I'm talking about things like what happens, heaven forbid, if, you know, our partners walk away from the deal, or they decide to sell it to someone else. Based on our reading of the contract language, it'd be possible for them to walk away without really having fulfilled any performance requirements, have no penalty essentially, and the new buyer would be able to come in and just pick up precisely the same terms that exist there today with the person, with the author of this project. So that is troubling to me, and the analogy I draw also is in terms of, you look at the performance standards on these things, normally there's a minimum performance level. Well, in the first ten years, the developer will be entitled to forty percent of the captured value, and the only trigger, the only gate for that is at the end of year ten. A lot can happen in that timeframe. How do we know, how will we know that we are on a trajectory for success? And is, I know it's not exactly like a revenue projection where there's a build year after year, and I've looked at it in detail, you know, we're on track for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars or something like that after the first year of the thirty-year agreement in terms of value that we created potentially, but how do we do that if all hell breaks loose, which could happen? And we're not predicting it, and it may have low probability, however, if we're being asked to really put our thumbprint on this deal, I've got to have some line of sight and some comfort level to that, and at this moment, I have none.
Well, I can say that we introduced the notion of earlier checkpoints very early on in the discussions, and the developers here, they can speak for themselves, but I do recall distinctly that the issue that they brought to our attention is that really, the shorter timeframe that we're thinking about, maybe a five-year for conversation points, really doesn't give them much time to perform.
Yeah.
They've got a lot of money to sink in the ground before they even start
Yep.
construction of any sort, so, and it became abundantly clear that the deal that we've kind of brought forward here is really an infrastructure-only deal, and from their perspective, it's really about securing, using this as a foothold or a piece of collateral to secure other financing to make significant investment in sooner than later.
Yeah.
And that's really what this, the elements of this deal are about at this point.
Yeah, that's a fair point. So I just, I don't want to suck all the oxygen out of the room, so
No, it's a good discussion. I think it's helpful to hear those, but let me just speak to some of the things you raised. I mean, the failure to perform if it's a disaster, well, in the first instance, it's a disaster for Scarborough Downs owners, because they don't get anything, if there's zero revenue to speak of during the first five years, well, they're already in the ground out there. They're spending money, they're in front of the planning board, have already got phase one approved. They're going forward with all their own money, and the tax revenue that is created, if you look at the tables, is, in the sense of what will eventually be brought forward for tax revenue, is really thin during the early years. So this, the risk really rests on the developer in the early years. It is an incentive-based program, that really is the way we structured it, that if they want to do well, they have to perform. If they don't do well, then they don't, they won't get much money, because there won't be much in the way of tax revenue. And if they decide to sell, they have to get our approval to sell. So that's, now, we can't unreasonably withhold that approval, but we do have the right to decide whether that's permitted or not, and we put that right in the agreement. I wanted the public to be aware of that.
Yeah, I would just, thanks for pointing that out, and I didn't respond to the point that was made earlier, that the developers clearly, you know, assume a lot of risk and they're along lead times that folks who aren't builders don't realize, you know, so there's a long lead time, and we went through some of this the other day, you know, of five or ten years, just to kind of get things going in order for it to be ready, you know, at the end of that hurdle, the performance hurdle that's in there, the only one in phase one. But the fact remains that if something bad happened, and with that language of how we can't, you know, unreasonably withhold something, it's really very general language, that would be very hard to enforce, I would not be happy with that in an agreement that I would sign, and I just think there is simply language missing otherwise that we might need in order to protect the town for where we might be without a developer and infrastructure not built, however significant residential construction built with the associated costs to serve for that, and, you know, with the town actually being underwater in terms of, you know, the additional costs associated with that, cost to serve and cost of schools. So, so I'm, you know, I like to think of myself as an optimistic person, as somebody, and I know builders are, developers certainly are, the guys with the vision to do something that's this big and ambitious, it's bold, and I, you know, there are many things about it that I like, however, there are, those are just a couple of basic concerns, and I have more detailed questions to get into specifics in terms of the language. I read very carefully Mr. Brenn's analysis, and, you know, I was impressed by that. It was also interesting that he pointed out there's no capital risk to the town in the first phase, you know, because there is no capital outlet, however, by the funding mechanism that we have, we essentially are making it possible to provide the developers with something they can use for collateral in order to help them for cash flow. There's no secret there, that's a fact, however, it's not like there isn't any value at stake or any risk at stake to the town. So that's my kind of like wind-up, and when I've worked on very complex issues and And when I've worked on very complex issues and projects, I find that when we rush to solve something, that very often, a large, complex problem is not ready to be solved. And I've had that feeling repeatedly as a bystander, and I feel that very intensely now. So, I just, I thought I'd leave it there with the preamble. Thank you.
Sean, do you have any comments really on the downside risk issue that you brought forward?
Well, so, the last point that was raised about sort of this, the capital outlay is not on the town side for the infrastructure, it's on the developer's side, but obviously there's a credit enhancement agreement that's making that possible. There definitely are, you know, there's less risk on the town as a result of that dynamic, because you don't then, as a town, obligate yourself to making debt service payments. You're only making a percentage of whatever happens to be generated and increases us value there. So, the risk that that's not enough to cover the costs of that debt service, whatever it may be, that risk is on the developer. And so, that's why it's an advantage for the town to structure it this way and to not have to take that capital outlay on its own balance sheet. It's also gonna help us going forward in our future bond issues and our bond ratings and all that, to keep that on the developer's side. So, I just wanted to respond on that point. The other thing, and I think, I think now councillor Donovan responded appropriately on the assignment provision, which is for assignments for purposes other than for financing the project itself, the consent of the town council is required, and the language is that it shall not be unreasonably withheld. That language you'll find in every credit enhancement agreement that Scarborough has entered into, and every credit enhancement agreement, I think, that I have seen in the state of Maine. That's not to say it can't necessarily be improved upon, but there is, there is a dynamic in that language where the council will have an opportunity to say, not this assignment because of some identifiable reason you can point to, that you would have to defend, or I would have to defend in a court, to say this is a reasonable refusal for this consent. I can't tell you that I've been through a court case on that particular issue, but that's the explanation for where that language comes from. And it's very difficult to identify language to put in this contract today that would encapsulate that future scenario. So, but certainly if there's something we can think of specifically that would make a reasonable refusal understandable, we can talk about that.
Go ahead.
No, a quick, just clarification. So, a refusal, I mean, it must be a pretty high bar. I mean, it must be, you know, felonies or some, I mean, what would qualify as a reason to say no?
I mean, I think that's really a question for you all. You do have the discretion in your...
Well, I mean, you said that it goes to court, right?
Yes, right.
What would be the bar the courts would use to...
So, I think the, I think probably, and this is my best guess on what a court would do, they would look to what the town expected to get out of the arrangement in the first place, and try to get a sense for whether making this assignment is going to markedly reduce the town's ability to get that benefit. I think that's the analysis we would have to undergo in that circumstance. And if we can point to certain things that a few, an assignee, that the developer would be choosing at that point, that would indicate that they're just not gonna be able to do this, the things that we want them to do, that would rise to the level of a reasonable basis.
So, looking specifically, so according to Mr. Brin's analysis, the first one really, so the one on the, that was released on September 19th. It looks like there is, I know these aren't single-family homes, but there is the opportunity for 1,000 new housing units on year one to five, so it looks to me that after year five, we could have 1,000 new housing units, and 1,300 total through the first 10 years. So, working off that and the section 2.3c in the contract, that essentially is the clause that says, hey, if they build more than 750 single-family homes. So, I guess question one would be, does that void the entire, the way I'm reading is, that voids the entire language of the CEA. And question two would be, would that be when they, if it's not them, a new developer would pull a 750-first building permit? How is it quantified, according to the language, that we have exceeded the 750 single-family homes?
Well, we've excluded senior and affordable.
Sure.
But the intent, and I believe the language serves that intent, is that the CEA ceases to exist if they go beyond that cap, or any successor goes beyond that cap.
Sure. So, how would that happen? So, when, is that, is that something that it's constantly checked in on? Can you get through 850 houses before, like, how would that, how do we know the 750 single-family house threshold hasn't met?
You're looking at, what kind of audit are we gonna do?
Right. Yep.
Yeah. We'll set up a internal system that will check that. There's also biennial reporting, so I suspect as part of that, there'll be a check-in with the public on a fairly consistent basis. And if we're ever getting close to that, we're gonna watch it really, really closely. So, I don't fear our ability...
So, do you more frequently than biannually?
Certainly.
Yeah.
We have systems in place to monitor all sorts of things on a daily basis, so
Sure.
I have no doubt in our abilities to monitor that piece.
And I know, we're trying to understand, you know, and study the problem statement, not necessarily jump into solutions, but I did miss the opportunity to respond to the point you made there about the triggers, you know, and the commitment to meet every year to discuss progress, you know, with the developers. Why couldn't we have as part of that meeting spell out that that would be a checkpoint of all key metrics, including residential units built against the 750, infrastructure in the ground, or meters of sewer pipe, or whatever the measures should be, versus the total, that kind of thing? So, at least we've got a dashboard. And I know you're considering those for the finance committee dashboards to kind of let us know if we're red, yellow, green, and trending. Why couldn't we do something like that, so that we would have a running idea of the trajectory of this thing?
That was clearly my expectation of what those biennial reports would be. We didn't articulate, you know, all the metrics we want to measure.
We haven't done that part.
But I think that's a reasonable expectation, that the council's gonna be very interested in the particulars of what's going on out there and, you know, what's planned for the future as well.
But I would like to see, since we're at the point of trying to consider agreements that are drafted and proposed in front of us, that that would be put in now, so that we don't leave that for a future date and never get to it. So, that would be my bias, since we're, and I don't, you know, I don't really know what the material standard is for this, but, you know, we got a lot of smart people, ladies are being focused on this. And it seems like that would be, that would be something that we could work on to reassure the public that we have these safeguards of this process built in, so this is how we're gonna track it.
And a quick question on just that last point, I think I'll turn to Sean. As I understand it, once the CEA is approved, then it's hard to, any amendments after that, if we do wanna make changes, has to be mutually agreed upon, right?
That's certainly true. And in fact, in this scenario, because the development program and adoption of the TIF district is subject to the statutory process, depending on what kind of amendments we're talking about, we might have to go back through the public hearing process to make certain modifications that are large enough in scope. And that really just hardwires in the public notice, public hearing process, and authorization.
So, it's only a consideration of if it's better to do it now than to try to do it downstream to make adjustments in the CEA?
Well, I think it's nice to avoid having to do amendments. I will offer, though, that I do about, I do a lot of TIF work, and about half of what I do are amendments to TIFs and CEAs, and half of what I do are new. So, it's frequent that, you know, things evolve, and you may wanna amend your TIF district for purposes other than those that relate to the credit enhancement agreement.
But it wouldn't be the total control of the town council. It would have to be mutually agreed upon, which creates a dynamic...
With the developer, yes, as a contract, yes.
Just wanted to make sure. I think Sean, you had a question?
Well, so, the question I have is maybe to the bigger scale of what was asked regarding kind of like individual solutions. Is it common to put that level of detail solution within a contract? And it seems to me there's, there are so many variables, by the way, no matter what detail that you put in, the second part of the question is, in 20 years, presumably all of us are gone. I know some of us will be. And the next council or that council can change it completely.
Gone, gone?
You know what I mean? You're not gonna be sitting at the table.
He may have retired.
Retired, that's right. Good. I mean, they can change it, right? Any future council can change it, both to be more restrictive as well as more generous.
So long as, if it's changes to the credit enhancement agreement, the developer agrees to that, that is...
But to this point, expectations of future councillors, we can't anticipate.
Right.
I mean, we can, I guess, put a stake in the ground and say, these are the things we think at the outset are important to check on a periodic basis. I think what you're talking about here is probably something that's quite achievable. I don't think conceptually it's opposed in concept.
Yeah, I mean, what I was trying to do is kind of address a question I think Sean asked last time. For the TIF overall...
Right.
We can make amendments as a town council to the TIF overall. So, we can change the percentage we withhold, we can change on how the funds are gonna be used.
Right.
But once we have the document, this CEA, then there has to be that mutual consent.
Of course.
Only those items that are in the CEA. For anything else related to the TIF district, it doesn't affect that obligation in the council.
Right, right. But there's two distinct sort of conversations. The bigger TIF, absolutely, we can as a dis-council or a future council, whatever, that's within their preview. But for the credit enhancement, we, once we sign it, then it's a two-party conversation.
That's correct.
So, the first part of the question was about the level of detail, because
Yeah.
there's big scope issues I don't disagree with that should be in a CEA that agree upon, but the level of detail seems to be more about managing the contract, at least in that one particular. Is that common to include the language? It seems to me that, am I not?
I would say it's not common, you know, that this particular credit enhancement agreement, given the level of performance standards that are included, there's a lot more detail, I think there needs to be, because the town has said we need to have these performance standards in place, and that then created the need for us to figure out how to, to the best of our ability, measure that in the future and create a process. So, I would say there's a lot more detail already in this credit enhancement agreement than I see normally. But it is what it is. It's a negotiation, and so, you know, we put in the level of detail we feel we need.
I think about, you know, staying on top of it as the first several years come along particularly, is an excellent thought. I mean, we really, but I think the town has the control over most of the data that would ever, building permits, tax values. A lot of the data would be in our hands and producible. And if we were to make a request for data that was not confidential data, I have no doubt that, since this has an element of partnership, by contract, but partnership, that anything we requested that was exclusively in the hands of the developer, and who's to say what that might be? Which is why I wouldn't necessarily go down the road of trying to say, now we're gonna have seven sub-paragraphs that identify it, because when we're not at the table, somebody else might have a different perception. But I think all of the data is largely within our control, or would always be willingly produced by the partner that we're establishing in this agreement.
Just another point, keep in mind, it doesn't mention anywhere in here, but there's the whole planning board process and the rigors associated with that. And this zone in particular requires some extraordinary time in terms of initial planning. So, there's a lot of lead time. There'll be things that are in front of planning board, like they are now, that are six, eight, 12 months, you know, from coming to reality. What we do know already is the first phase is approved, and it's all residential predominantly anyway. The second phase is in process, but that is a total flip in terms of it's all light industrial, manufacturing-focused. So, that much we know. There'll be phases three, four, and five and beyond perhaps. So, there'll be a sense of what's kind of in the works as well, while we're actually seeing dirt moving down there.
I have no doubt that we have control of that data today. The worry that I have is scope and scale, and how the current system will be tested. I think developers would even tell you now that we're bursting at the seams in terms of agendas for the planning board. People are maxed out in terms of just the work they've done to support the proposal phase of the Downs. You know, and looking at some data here from 2017 of the list of all the TIFs in the state of Maine, there's about 50 of them. Ours would be number three on the list, behind Bath Iron Works, which was never really listed. It was whittled down. Hollis is number two at 109 million. And that's because they had to create an entire town infrastructure, Poland Spring Water did, because they had no public safety function. And Rumford, I think, was probably related to a paper mill there. But ours would be in the top three of that, which would suggest that we are, you know, a big gorilla in the TIF and CEA world, so we ought to have big gorilla infrastructure to be able to manage it. And I think even today, with the volume of growth that we have, you look at the building permit process, pick one. And I'm not saying this to be critical, I'm saying this to be factual and realistic about the load factor. If we're looking at this, you know, size and scale, 80 million, 30 years, it's gonna take a different level of effort, resources, and support in order to really manage that effectively. Why don't we begin by making sure that we've got documents that are gonna make that possible? Not something we'll figure out, you know, later. I find there'll be lots of other things for us to be worrying about later. So, that's the, and I think every time we get into talking about the Downs, we skip over the fact that this is an enormous undertaking, and that we tend to compare it to all the other TIFs and CEAs, which it really is not like all the other ones.
It's certainly an enormous undertaking, no question, but I would also say it's an enormous opportunity, and it's an opportunity for us to take an active role in development, more so than we can in other circumstances. In all other circumstances, we've set the zoning, the land use regulations, say what they can and can't do. We've got some other mechanisms that might throttle things through the growth control. But beyond that, we take what comes our way, what we say is permitted. This allows us to take an active role, and that's a unique and different level of involvement, and there's a level of effort and responsibility that comes with that, there's no question.
I wanna kind of take us out of the weeds a little bit, because I think we're diving in pretty deep, and go back to that 50,000-foot view, because that's where I live. And for me, and this kind of goes back to address your first question or concern, in talking around, you know, worst-case scenario, best-case scenario, I think we could walk down the street and poll our citizens, and we'd get a whole lot of opinions about what the worst-case scenario and the best-case scenario is. Some would say the best-case scenario is that the Rocky brothers all go on vacation, never come back, and don't build anything there. And then we would have some other folks in town who would say, this is the best thing since sliced bread. I can't wait for a community center, been asking for a pool for a long time. So, for me, what I, when I look at that, I try to weigh all of that. It's been pretty even, honestly, the feedback that we've been getting via email and conversations. But I look at it as, so I live over that way, I used to cut through that road, I can't anymore. But, you know, I was driving by, you know, a business that at one time was thriving and a crown jewel for the town, that was no longer that, and could be again. Some dilapidated buildings and whatnot. And so, when I think about best-case and worst-case scenario for me, it's going to glance, something's gonna happen there. So, I want the best partner, and I do think we have the best partner right now. And I want the best mix possible, because I think that's, to go back to our biggest goal around keeping taxes predictable and sustainable. For me, worst-case scenario would be, we're not at the table, we don't have a say in the mix, and I think 40% residential would crush us. I've not run the numbers, because I'm not that girl. I've not run the numbers, because I'm not that girl, but I've seen them enough at a high, a high enough level that I don't believe that would best serve our town either. So I'm not in the camp of this is the best thing since sliced bread, and I certainly think there could be potentially some language changes, and I'm curious to hear more about what some of the things are that you may have, because I think, as Bill said, fresh eyes on a project that you've been looking at for a long time is really helpful. And I'm sure you found some things that we didn't even consider or talk about yet. So anyway, that's kind of where I am on, on the big higher-picture piece. I think we could get too far in the weeds, too, trying to worry about what are every scenario. So they go in through phase one, and they lose all their money in their bank up, so now we have just a small little residential pod and a huge green space that could become a park or something, I don't know. But I, I think that's almost getting too far ahead of ourselves.
Steve, could you expand on, in your, your executive summary here, you pretty clearly say that you have a little bit of reservations about the retail sector, A, for the demand of the retail sector, and B, how it would actually fit into a vision of downtown. So if, if it were successful, that it might not actually reconcile with the vision of a walkable downtown. I didn't know if maybe you could expand on that, on, on a second follow-up point. If I'm reading this correctly, we're also looking at the same student load, if not smaller student load, for scenario number one without the CEA. So if you can maybe educate me on those two, that would be helpful.
Sure, be happy to try. So, on the, well, let me start with the second question.
Sure.
So, yeah, the student load is dependent on the type of housing being built. And so in scenario one, there are fewer, there are more total housing, you know, 1,986, I believe, versus 1,000 and some change in scenario two, but the number of students resulting out of those is only about 50 different because of the type of housing that's put into the One point I tried to make in the, in the study was that if there's really demand in Scarborough for that, for 350 students that are going to arise out of, out of scenario one, then they're probably going to show up somewhere else in town anyway.
Right.
So it, it could be academic, so scenario two could result with 350 students, too. They just won't be in that development necessarily. So, is that?
Yep, let's, yeah, just wanted to make sure I was reading it, I was, yep.
And then, just to refresh.
The, one of the biggest concerns I think you had, because it was quite a bit of extrapolation.
Right, right, on the retail, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so the models that consultants did to evaluate the demand for retail basically showed not a lot of demand in Scarborough for additional retail. And I, I think it was an appropriate analysis, but what it didn't consider really is, is the type of unique retail that might fit in that location. And I, in my experience, I think the type of location that we're looking at would support certain types of retail that don't exist in this part of the market. And by market, I mean the greater Scarborough market, which includes, you know, seven or eight towns. So I think those types of retailers would find the site attractive.
Do you have an example of those types of retailers?
Well, I'm sure it could be something like a, a unique type of supermarket that isn't in the market yet, or it could be a wholesale type of club that isn't in the market yet. Those type of retailers, I think we find this site very attractive. Because they're able to draw customers past more conventional, convenience-oriented retailers, where other, you know, if you put a, not to pick on Shaws, but I always, I always pick on Shaws.
Old habits. Where'd you work?
If you, if you put a Shaws in this development, they may not be able to do enough volume, or even a Hanaford for that matter, because people aren't going to drive by more convenient Shaws to get to this one. And there's not enough population base within the development to support a store itself. It has to draw people from outside.
So the Cabela's gateway model?
Yes, exactly. It has to be more of a regional draw, and, and the, and the regional access is excellent for this site. So my, my concern that I mentioned in the report was, if it's going to have a regional draw and, and attract a large number of customers, it could threaten the pedestrian friendliness of the, of the housing development. So my, my concern and recommendation was that, and subsequently, I think I saw a plan that showed that they're, they're separated enough so that that shouldn't be an issue, that people feel comfortable living in, in, in a residential's part of the development, not really be impacted by the retail development, and be able to do their downtown pedestrian walking and, and really, it shouldn't be an issue. But I think it, I, potentially it could be if it wasn't designed appropriately. Is that helping?
Yeah, very much, thank you.
Yeah, actually, I wanted to suggest, I think that Counselor fully brought up a good point about the risk. If you talk to the general public in Scarborough, the risk that they're focusing in on is not related to the credit enhancement agreement or the TIF. What they're focusing on is what is going to be developed there. And everything that's currently being proposed, which is outside of both of these, is permissible under existing zoning ordinance. They're worried about type of housing, what's the industries, how many kids are going to be as a result of that. I think in the worst-case scenario, at least for me, is what, if we don't do this and we have 4,000 residential homes, that is the bigger risk of what, from the what-if. But I think that Katie was 100% right. They're focusing on something very different than what the actual impact of this credit enhancement agreement or the TIF is. Because I did hear, actually, it was from Mr. Hamel's wife, I think is the one that asked the question early on. The, the risk is, why do we need to give $81 million for development that could already happen without it? I have an opinion on that, but I think that's, that was probably the only one that I heard that was related to the actual agreement.
Yeah, I, I've always thought that there were, I mean, two premier reasons to do it. One, if we could, in the end, have, make a lot of money for the town out of this. And the model had to show it, and we had to have it tested. But secondly, money isn't the only driving factor here. The point that's been made is, is it going to manage growth? Because we've got a long-time-in-place comprehensive plan that identifies this as the growth area. For all the good planner-speak reasons that you, it's in the center of everything. You can have limited transportation problems, the costs of services are reduced. So that's sort of baked into the cake. And now what I've always thought we should be doing is, and I would, from the beginning, once we had reached the agreement that we were going to limit this potential of thousands of residences to 750 single-family residences, which is where I've always perceived the schoolchildren really come from primarily, instead of one or two-bedroom apartments or senior housing. I thought that was a wonderful step forward, that the developers were prepared to make that commitment. Because that really, the factors were, how do you drive the mix? Square footage of non-residential space, limit, single-family, large, three and four-bedroom, 3,000-square-foot, three-bathroom, four-bathroom houses. That we have, I don't know, we have 7,000 or 10,000 of them in town. It's 77% single-family dwellings. And that's a, that's a killer. You can't, we've had a longstanding goal of getting a residential mix of 75% residential, 25% non-residential, commercial, industrial, manufacturing, retail. Well, I, I've been enthused by our willingness, the willingness of the developer to negotiate towards that. And it's funny, the first time we ever met, I remember Peter Micho making the point, this could be something special for Scarborough. It was remarkable. They had, they came to the table with the vision that, that we could manage growth in a way that would improve the tax base tremendously. And I've always thought that managing growth was, if we can do that and make money, we really will have, I'd love it to be a beautiful downtown and a park and a community center, and we'll work on those in the next five years. But the hard, the hard fact was control growth, have it be a good financial fiscal outcome for the town.
And maybe I can digress a little bit. And Steve, while you're here, just to kind of put you on the spot, because I think we've heard tonight a couple of times, and I agree, the making money part is key. And Steve, in your report, and actually, we haven't really talked about it as a group, the two financial reports we got. So in yours, I just like, there, there are a couple of things you did say that I'd just like to have you talk a little bit about, about impact. And one is, you talk a little, we talked about earlier tonight, the capital cost.
Yeah.
So what you have in here on page two of your report, you have, it is assumed that the current and future impact fees will cover the cost of any future infrastructure need caused specifically by this development that was not already being paid for by the developer directly. Evaluating impact fees was beyond the scope of, of the assignment. So, so clearly you've kind of said, that's an important assumption. And then we don't have, and Tom, maybe before I digress, you talked, Steve's here, but the other consultant we had, do you want to talk a little bit about who that was and a little bit of background, which is?
Sure, he's provided a bit of a bio about himself in the, in the materials that are posted. He's a consultant that we actually have association with as part of our comprehensive plan process. And we've actually purchased the so-called ROI model that relied heavily on understanding and estimating costs of different development types as part of our comprehensive plan, as a planning tool, really evaluating land use decisions and being more informed about what is, what's the impact and consequence of this zone or that zone. We use this, the model that he created for that planning purpose for a very detailed analysis of a particular set of development scenarios.
So Steve, you, you sort of recognize or questioned sort of that cost of capital or infrastructure. He also points out, Matt, this other consultant said, the fiscal impact analysis excludes construction costs from the calculations based on the assumptions that all infrastructure will be paid by the developer and/or with current, future development impact fees. Evaluating the town's development impact fee program and calculating impact fees might cover all future infrastructure costs not paid by the developer is beyond the scope of peer review. So, so both are saying that's a critical assumption. So that's one question I had, so if you could speak to that. Two, you also point out, and I, I just want more clarity, it's, it is worth noting that the 336 million in scenario one and the 117 million in scenario two are provided in future dollars and would be considerably less in today's dollars if the discount rate was applied. So that, that really has something to do with, with the, the timing of revenue flows and where we get them. That really ties into the third piece that I, that, that really is my bigger question. If, if one, I guess the, the fourth thing is you kind of get this disclaimer, it would be prudent for the town to also have an outside person who demonstrated expertise in municipal and school development costs and revenues, review the assumptions. And your last bullet is, additionally, that both scenarios have, in, in this case, 78% of our revenues, the town revenue, occur in years 20 through 30. And you said, you say there should be, there's a significant amount of risk that's sort of associated with that. That's echoed by, again, this consultant that says, where is it? Says, you know, again, the 30-year buildup period for the fiscal impact analysis is longer than similar studies in the United States. Changing market conditions, demographics, lifestyle choices, et cetera, observed over the last 30 years demonstrate how variable some of the assumptions about household size, students per household, might be anticipating conditions for 2048. So can you weave those themes together? And we're talking a lot tonight about risk. Is there some risk that most of our revenue comes in years 20 through 30 in this, in this forecast?
Yeah.
Is there any way to address that in, in your estimation?
I think there is risk in that assumption. I'd like to see, you know, a lot of the development occur earlier than years 20 or 30. Because as, as you just mentioned, you know, it, it's hard to predict what's going to, what's going to change between now and then. Whereas in years zero through 10, you know, it's, it's fairly predictable. Once you get beyond year 10, you're going into another level of unknown and more of a level of, high level of risk. But, so I would like to, you know, if it were my project, I would like to see, you know, maybe 50/50, say, 50% of the, of the revenues occur after year 20, as opposed to?
80%.
77 or.
88.
In scenario one, it's 62%. So in the preferred scenario, it's 62%. That's closer to 50%. So in my mind, the CEA scenario is less risky than doing nothing, because that revenue is really backloaded. Now, that's based on assumptions that, that the developer has given there, and that says, that says, you know, X amount of development's going to happen in, in each year, and, and a lot of it's going to happen after year 20.
And, and do you have a rule of thumb that if you, if you brought dollars from year 20 and 30 back to present tense?
Yeah.
That, that's a significant?
Yeah. I'd say, of course, it depends on, on your discount rate and what, what percentage you think inflation's going to be in the next 30 years. But if you used a 0.4 to multiply, you know, the 386 million, if that's the right number, I think, you know, that's probably bringing it back to today, ballpark.
Multiply by 0.4.
So 130 million. But if you're comparing scenario one to scenario two, it's, it's still going to be the same relative difference. You know, if you're talking about today's dollars, you're talking about dollars out in year 30, it's, the relative magnitude between two scenarios isn't going to be dramatically different.
I just, I just remember when we were, when we were working together at Hanaford, I know all the investments we did, it was 10 years, right? We looked at 10 years.
Well, we looked at 10 years, and then we looked at another 10 years that, basically, we said, the first 10 years, we're going to make real assumptions about what's going to happen, and the next 10 years, we're going to let it ride. And then we bring it all back to year zero.
Right.
And Peter, if I could just add to it, because you've made, you, you talked before about the, you know, what's going to happen in the early years, because that's more predictable. And so one of the, there's a couple of things. One, I think that's why scenario one, which is the preferred one, the manufacturing, the production square footage is really front-loaded on that one because they know the market is now. And so that is one of the fundamental differences between scenario one and scenario two, is they're trying to get most of that done in the first five to 10 years.
How much, how much square footage are we assuming by year 10? It's not a?
500,000 square feet.
Under, under construction, right?
Right, that's a measure. It's a little bit more than that from the, just from the numbers that they've given me.
That's year 10, right. It's 10 years out.
Yeah. Well, some of it is happening, happening early. It's, it's why they were concerned about taking time, because they do have some, folks are ready to go in the spring. I don't know, Rocky.
Behind you, Rocky, one, it's a, should contribute.
Can I clarify those numbers?
Sure.
Why don't you take the party in, please?
Let me tell you, where do you look? Just to clarify those numbers, in the credit enhancement agreement, it's 500,000 we have to be at by year five?
10.
10.
Year 10. Under construction, not, not completed, just under construction, right?
Under construction or permitted and going by year 10. But in our, like... But in our light manufacturing and innovation district, that area is planned for 750,000 square feet of manufacturing, and then there's another about 180,000 square feet of more of a retail type use. So we're in the process of getting that section approved right now.
But that's still after year 10, right? But what you just described?
It's in the numbers as if it were going to occur after year 10, but we're trying to get it approved now because we know there's a market for it now.
Hey, quick, quick, quick question to Tom, just to clarify, when you said you're both, both teams are working on the cost of infrastructure? I think you said by, you know, you're working on that now. Is that going to be broken out between what is the infrastructure cost for residential versus what the infrastructure cost is for light industrial and the other? Is there a way to break that out or have some?
I haven't seen how granular their, their information is. I think it's going to be difficult to assign infrastructure costs entirely to one use or another, because, you know, there's enabling infrastructure that's necessary that's going to kind of run up to the middle of the site and then feed the different areas.
But I thought when we were talking today, you said something about, we know it's, it's higher voltage stuff, bigger diameter pipes. But I mean, if, if there's any way to tease that out, I think that'd be really helpful for us to see, what's, what's the residential infrastructure? What's sort of?
I see what you mean. Yeah, there's, this is not my area of expertise, but there's certain infrastructure that is unique to certain development types. Three-phase electricity is not likely, they wouldn't make the investment but for the need of the industrial customers. Sizing of some of the systems, the water flow and sewer flow will be in large part predicated on who the users are. So there is an incremental, there's a, there's a cost difference depending on those users.
It'd just be helpful if there was some way to try to ballpark the total infrastructure cost and what, what, sort of how those numbers break up.
Before we leave, Steve, I just want to point out, one thing that I was struck with, on this major theme, is that you say if phases one and two get built as proposed in years zero through 10, and that they're doing well, the likelihood is good that phases, phase three will well soon be built.
Right.
So another way of saying that, are you saying if the best way to assure future success is do what we can to get near-term success? Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. Yeah, I think, I think the risk is, is reduced. If phases one and two and whatever else happens in the first 10 years is successful, the out-years have a high likelihood of being successful as well.
Just, just want to, Steve, I don't know if you know this, just additional costs, we're talking about the Matt used for schools. The unit costs and new unit values used for the fiscal impact analysis of consistent stands, and the two perspectives of school costs provide a more conservative, including certain fixed costs and less conservative excluding fixed costs. We excluded fixed costs. Do you know what Matt was referring to there?
I can have one that. We, we did both. We looked at just the average cost, the 15,000 plus per student, and then we did what we called the sort of marginal cost analysis, which was looking at probably not going to double the central office. So we took some key costs out, and that was about 30%, I believe. And so we ran both analyses, so we had a low end and a high end on the analysis for, for schools. So we looked at it both ways.
So did, was he just, she just get confused about saying that it? He's saying that we excluded the, the fixed costs.
In one, in one scenario, we did, yes. And, and we, we looked at it both ways. And, and in both ways, I'll say in the, the first five years, you're certainly better off if you're using the 70% or 30% fixed, 70% assigned to the students. But we wind up being positive in terms of the ROI in both cases. So we, we did, we did run the full freight, I think it's 15, too, something like that. So in both cases, we're positive.
I think Matt was saying that to be entirely conservative in the cost analysis, use the higher number.
Right.
I think we did a very thoughtful review of our costs and extracted out those ones that we don't think will be duplicated. That ends up being assigning a unit cost per student in the order of $10,000 per head, as opposed to the full freight of 15. If you simply do the math of student population and the total cost of schools, that's the per pupil expense.
Karen, if I could ask this of you, when we had our public hearing, what we were hearing from the business community, Scarborough Chamber of Commerce, Greater Portland Chamber of Commerce, was that they said, go report, that they were endorsing the adoption of this TIF, the CEA, because they saw a large economic development element. We haven't really talked about the economic development. Did you sort of run a, a deal, no deal comparison to see how good the economic development is in doing this deal?
We did look at jobs in both cases, and we looked at the jobs that would be created on the site. And for the, forgive me, I'm not going to remember the scenario one, but I believe for scenario, I'm sorry, scenario two, but for scenario one, we were somewhere around 2,500 jobs to almost 3,000. And the difference is really office in terms of the square feet per employee. If you're looking at sort of the IDEX version of employees per square feet, that's very low, like under 200 square feet per employee, we were being conservative and using a higher factor. And that's where that 2,400 came in. I think on the scenario two, we were down to really about 1,000 new jobs over the course of the 30 years. The other thing that we, we didn't really?
Scenario two is lesser.
The lesser scenario.
And that is a do-no-deal scenario.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And then the types of things that we didn't look at is the spin-off effect of really having this development build out. I will tell you, we were all, we're already seeing people more interested in what's happening in Higas Parkway because they, they believe something's going to be happening at the down. So there's some, there's definitely some activity there. And I think that will begin to spur more interest in Higas. It will also be like one of the things that the chamber is very interested in. When you land at this amount of both employees and population, you're going to have some great customers for all of your Oak Hill businesses, for restaurants, shopping, and those types of things. So I think that's where the Chamber of Commerce folks really come in, is they see this as there's a lot of new customers coming to town.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of Rocky? Would that be okay? Or is that inappropriate?
Couldn't kind of ask a question, Rocky, come up?
Okay, sure. So I think because the agreement, the way the agreement's worded, because our check-in is at 10 years, I didn't know perhaps it would be useful to maybe, I know nobody's being held to any of these numbers, but maybe give a snapshot of what year five would look like. Because every, because 10 years is 10 years in the future, and then we do, we are up against that 70, approximately 70% of our benefit is past that 10 years in the future. So I didn't know if it was possible to articulate what five years could look like, what five years is going to look like, best-case scenario, just?
Where do you want to be in five years?
Yeah, where do you want to be in five years?
We want to be on the downside of finishing up the light industrial phase, and which would mean that we're, you know, over half a million in on, on square footage. I think it's important to note that, you know, we, we agree with Mr. Bryn, we want to develop this thing faster if possible. We do feel this market available to us now, and we think it's, it's very important that we get this agreement signed so that we can move forward. We talked a little bit about, Peter calls it the sales cycle, but it takes a lot of time in the, in the developing business and the construction business to, by the time we figure out what the plan is, and we get it designed and drawn, and get it approved, and go find a buyer, and then physically build a building, and get the building occupied, and get them paying taxes, you can go through three, four years pretty easily by the time you get there. So when you start to think about this 10-year, this five-year, this 10-year period, we're going to get there pretty, pretty quickly. Our goal would to be, would be to be well above the 500,000 at year 10, and we feel that it's absolutely possible to do that. But it's important to, you know, to let us get started, and we think that this, this light industrial phase is really the place to start.
If I could, I, I did explore fairly thoroughly, I think, the, the notion of an earlier checkpoint, a five-year checkpoint.
Sure.
Maybe model of the same kind of metric, some number of square footage for non-residential build-out. Or we even talked about maybe a metric around infrastructure in the ground, which would be another indication of the correct direction. I had great receptivity from these guys that we could do that. The hang-up is, what's the consequence of not? And the chilling effect that that consequence, because there had, there could be a penalty, it's a lesser reimbursement. So it's back to the, the financial aspects of this. That puts a real chilling effect on their ability to go out now and secure the other resources required to make this go forward.
But there, there is nothing of that sort in the agreement now. There is no penalty, no downside penalty. It's only 40%, and there is nothing of the sort in there now, so.
That's true.
So I don't know. I, I, I understand how it could have a financial impact in terms of, if this is a condition and you're talking to a bank, then that collateral is not worth the same as it is now.
Correct.
They're going to look at the lesser percentage to be safe.
I get that. However, we're looking after the town's interests primarily.
Understood.
You know, we have partners, and we want them to succeed, but our focus is first and foremost, the town.
While Rocky's up there, Rocky, can you give us an idea of kind of what you're thinking will happen over the next 12, 24 months out there at the site?
So the next 12 to 24 months, as you all know, we started phase one, infrastructure's going in the ground. I would like to point out that the infrastructure that's going in the ground in the down road today is designed to handle our master plan as we desire to build it out. We have a 16-inch water main where if all we were doing was phase one, we just put eight-inch water main. We've got live sewer mains, we've got gas, natural gas, we've got three-phase power going in. We're building a 60-foot wide right-of-way, 20, 28-foot wide road, bicycle lanes on both sides, sidewalk on one side, on-site parking. We're building a road system right from Route 1 to start that's designed to serve this entire project. It's not needed to serve phase one. So that's, that's, that's been in our design from day one, because we know where we really want to build it. So we see in the next 12 months, 12 to 18 months, we should be completed in phase one and fully sold out, fully occupied on the apartments and condominiums, as well as the memory care facility. So we see that going. We would like to be building, putting infrastructure in the ground and, and building commercial buildings, light industrial buildings in, in what we want to be phase two. We have users in line that would like to put a shovel in the ground in June, and we are doing everything we can right now to be able to meet that schedule. We do intend to make a DEP submission in December so that we can be in position to start in June of 2019. So over that next time period, we would be, if we can get a credit enhancement agreement signed and know that we can then get our funding in place and get the infrastructure now, we will be building that light industrial phase. That's, that's where I see this.
Thank you. Engineering.
Rocky, while I have you up there through the chair, can you talk a little bit, when you talk about infrastructure, of course, I'm back at talking, thinking about broadband and three-ring binder and whatever, and am I incorrect in assuming that you're going to be bringing all of that in through that whole area? Because I think that would be critical for your, not only for your light industrial manufacturing, but also people who live in those houses or apartments or whatever.
Absolutely. That's, that's all underway.
Okay. So you do plan to expand from the three-ring binder, the high-speed, the high, high-speed?
Yes, we're working with them now. We're also working with Transit now.
Okay.
To get them, to get them lined up. And they're very, very interested in our, in our project, and I think the town's going to be happy to see what I think we can achieve if we, if we work together in that regard.
Yes, Rocky, while you're there, just to recognize myself, just a, a quick question. Do you include it in the CEA, and Thomas may be a question for you, or Counselor Donovan, how does it address if they're non-for-profit, non-taxable properties that go in? I mean, we all know that Main Health is a huge property owner in Scarborough, but how does that count toward the totals? How does that count? Are they implicitly included in the totals for square footage if entities come in that aren't going to be paying real estate taxes?
Well, listen, jump in if I'm wrong, but, but my understanding is that the, the square footage of what gets built to serve their needs does get counted towards our total of, of square footage requirements. But if they're, you know, if they don't pay taxes, we don't get any, any money.
No, no, neither do we, though. Neither do we. So it's kind of a two-way street. But it?
I think what Rocky's referring to is there's a benchmark of $615 million in increased assessed value that, that has to be achieved. That's a taxable property, not a non-taxable property. So that if we had a big main med facility in there that was worth 50 million bucks, it would go on the rolls at zero for the purposes of the year 20 benchmark.
But it would count, I, I think Rocky just said, but it would count toward the square footage.
Square footage. But not, but not, see, at year 20, he doesn't have just the square footage, he has a increased assessed value, so, which is?
Yeah. No, I just want to get clarity. So, so that's, that's what you think?
That's how.
That's currently how it's in the document. Okay, thank you.
But isn't that where the 10% bonus, the 10% bonus that those hurdles?
Yes.
The value.
Yeah, but you've identified a point, and there's, could be dozens of other ones that we haven't even identified, but those sorts of issues would be worked on probably not by me, by someone sitting in my, in my seat with my responsibilities. The manager's tasked with reporting to council as to whether performance measures have met, been met. That very scenario might be one that we would need to work through.
But, but if it's not explicit in this agreement, then it's really hard to, I mean, so that's why I think it's important that we just keep in mind that there's some things that are going to be difficult to clarify down the road.
And if I was asked that same question, I would, I would agree that though it's not explicitly written, my position would be that it would, as Rocky suggests, but that's not to say someone else other than me or another developer would see it differently. So to the extent we can clarify that and parties agree, we should.
Just a question to a point. Anybody else have anything for Rocky at this point? Nah. Anybody else have anything on this issue at this point in the workshop?
One last question, sorry. Shawna, could you speak to, on a scale of standard to exotic, what, where this agreement falls?
I wouldn't use the word exotic.
Okay. Standard to, standard to non-standard, right?
No, I mean, I would say that it is, it is certainly warranted for there to be a lot more going on in this credit enhancement agreement. This is, there are lots of area-wide TIF districts like this in that sense across the state. But this is a huge, obviously a huge by projected increased assessed value, but it's also a wide array of developments that are likely, it's not just a single business park where you're targeting one set of uses. There's a lot going on here. So I think it's warranted for, for there to be a lot going on, but there, this is a complicated credit enhancement agreement as far as they go. I happen to be familiar with the BIW district that's referenced there. It's also very complicated. It is also very old, so it's even, even worse.
Old and complicated, sounds bad.
Yeah.
Just offended half the table.
I'm talking about. But, you know, I think, I think it is often the case that I try, I try to advise municipalities to keep things as simple as possible because someone in the future is going to have to interpret it, there's something that's going to come up. And sometimes that's not achievable in the, in the truest sense of the word, simple. You know, we're trying to get something done here, the parties, in order to get to an agreement, there needs to be some, some complexity to it. And I, I would put this in that category. So. And I, I would put this in that category, so, I don't know, for what, for what that's worth.
That's helpful, thank you.
Can I just ask a follow-up to that? If, as I'm combing through the TIF and the CEIA, there's stuff in one and not in the other, or when it's in the other one, it's not in exactly the same place, and, oh, by the way, some stuff's not in either one. So, can you help to describe why, why is that, why one, one differs so dramatically in terms of format and content of the other?
That, I'd be happy to. So, so there's two documents we're talking about. One is called the Development Program, and that's the required document under the TIF statute that establishes the TIF district, lays out a lot of the statutory criteria information, and, and then separate, there's the credit enhancement agreement, which is actually the contract. That's the document that gives the developer the, the right to property tax reimbursement and lays out the conditions for those. So, one simple explanation is that what's in the credit enhancement agreement is going to govern the relationship between the private party and the municipality going forward. What's in the Development Program is meant to provide a summary of information about the whole district's purpose and uses for future TIF revenue, including, in this case, frankly, a fairly thorough description of what the terms of that credit enhancement agreement would be. There are other development programs in the state where it's, it's a lot more generic in terms of that description. It'll just say, you know, that the council will authorize a credit enhancement agreement on a, on a very, you know, some basic term. Well, there's so much going on in this agreement that I felt it was appropriate to put some additional background about what those terms are. But the contractual relationship will be governed by the credit enhancement agreement.
So, that was one other question. So, I, the number of 3,100 jobs stuck in my, in my brain from the TIF, 3,100 jobs created potentially, and there's no mention of that at all in the CEIA. That number does not appear in the CEIA. And what's more concerning to me, as an old HR guy, is that there's no mention of how those things should be built. How do we build up to that number? And what's the process that we use to follow that? So, that's even more, you know, that's even, if it's possible, more blank than some of the other things that I, that we talked about earlier. So, the, you know, these are, you know, where are the reasons in the cake here? Okay? And I couldn't find that one.
You know, one comment I would make about the jobs question is, a lot of the performance metrics in the credit enhancement agreement relate to things that the town has some information about already and, and can create, can, can measure it itself. I've been involved with credit enhancement agreements where the municipality really wanted to have jobs be a metric, and it, it ended up being much more difficult on an ongoing basis to, to figure out if those metrics were met, simply because you, you have to rely upon some private party to, to tell you how many people they employ.
Yep.
And sometimes getting that information can be tough, but that information is only so reliable. I, I just offer that, I, I don't recall whether, you know, we, what thought process went into that, but that's, that would have been my response in that.
We, we could have chosen establishing performance metrics around jobs. It's not to say we don't think that's important. We, we chose to, to focus performance in different areas rather than job creation.
Good. I, I did want to make, so, Don, to your point, I believe that in the Cabela's, whatever, I can't remember the formal name of, that credit enhancement agreement, there was a jobs metrics, and in fact, the criticism of having, not necessarily having that, but actually expecting them to report on it, was Cabela's came in, promised a lot of full-time jobs, a different kind of retail.
Yep.
Provided them within maybe the first five years, and then all of a sudden, they went to part-time. So, instead of having full-time, they went to part-time. So, it was one of those promises that were made at the beginning that never came to fruition, or they did for a short period of time, and then they realigned their model to exactly what they wanted.
I think the jobs metric would be exceedingly difficult, given the circumstance here. Let's use the Amazon example.
Yep.
I think...
Yeah, look at that.
We should put this conversation in context. Had Amazon come here, we'd be talking about a $3 billion...
Bring that photo up about yourself.
But because these folks aren't necessarily, some of the buildings they'll own and manage in the future, but in large part, it's going to be hard to hold them accountable for job creation when they're not the ones actually, you know, it's not a single business that has pretty good certainty around what they do and what the impacts of that are. So, I think it would be exceedingly difficult measure to, to use in this circumstance.
Yeah, I could see how it'd be very hard to, to control that to the manager.
Well, you can always double Economic Development Group so that they can bring in analysts to collect the data. Right, Karen?
Right, sure.
Did those numbers come from Jim Dimesis?
The jobs, actually, both, Jim developed some, and I developed some, and they wound up being almost exactly the same, are very close to it. So, these are mine.
So, going once, going twice, anybody, anything else? Everybody good? I think at this point, if there's anybody from the audience that wants to talk anything we've talked about tonight, we'll open it up briefly. If anybody wants to start, go to the podium. Not seeing a lot of takers, so...
Let's go ahead and do that.
I'll take just a brief moment. We're going to go back to the table, but I, I just thought this might be an opportunity as we are looking at, it's the time for committees and liaisons and just pass this sheet out. Tom, I think we may try to do something electronically for them to sign up, do you think? Or you just want to go...
Yeah, I'll see if you can send a Google Doc out, so, document, so you can first report online as opposed to, do it by hand, too, if that serves you.
So, I think the intent here is maybe just to take a look at the, and kind of indicate back what you might be interested in serving on. What we try to do here is the standing committees, how many members, and then the liaison committees. So, just let us know what you'd, would like to participate in, and we will go about trying to make those assignments and other things. And be glad to answer any questions. We'd be glad to answer any questions.
Just if I could, there was two things, I was taking notes here, that, that I'd like to see if we can advance. One would be just further detail around the Biennial Report, and that's, this is all subject to the other party being agreeable. And the other one is maybe just some clarity around the tax exam question as to how that will be valued and counted going forward. Again, subject to verification, but those are the only two things that I identified as the conversation went on. I want to make sure I wasn't missing something else.
As to the latter one, there didn't seem to be any disagreement about our interpretation versus Scarborough Downs' interpretation. So, clarifying that, I think, which was Peter's point, better to do it now than when there are different people at the table. So, I'd favor a clarification aspect there.
So, and I guess the question to Shawna would be, based on those two clarifications, would that necessitate, is that a, either one or both substantive change such that we would need to restart the process interview?
No, I mean, particularly because the, the summary that's contained in the Development Program about the terms in the credit enhancement agreement don't relate to those two details. So, I'm, I think if, if we were able to negotiate revisions that, that take up those two points, we could just make the updated credit enhancement agreement available to the public for the 28th and not have to read public notice for a public hearing under the TIF statute.
Yeah, and I kind of thought we were, we were, we're going to leave this session to go into executive session. I think that's probably a good conversation to have there. I don't know if there's other conversations, so I think that's...
I, I wasn't sure whether you were going to go to executive session. Okay.
I think it's scheduled, I think we should. It, it may be brief, but I think, I think we should.
For what purpose? I have about 25 other questions I didn't get a chance to ask for one. I mean, I think that, and I don't know that the characterization of consensus, and we're all good except for two things, I would agree with it, so...
That's why I was checking in.
Yeah, so, I did.
But I, I just want to make sure that the purpose of executive session is to ask questions that are strategic in nature, that might compromise or put into some risk that the contract, that needs to be kept confidential, so if the questions...
Well, it's negotiation strategy, too.
Well, that's what I mean. Yeah, I just want to make sure that the questions are related to that and not...
It's possible.
Data-driven, solution-driven, that kind of...
Yeah. I sense from this conversation, there, there may be some negotiation conversations we want to have as a group and make sure we do have that consensus, that we're in the right place or we're not. So, I think that's the intent of executive session. So, with that, I think we adjourned that.
Well, conduct yourself right here if you wish, if it's simply a motion to go in.
It's a motion to go in, yes, so. It's order number 18079, act on a request for an executive session pursuant to Title I, MRSAs 4056C, in consultation with legal counsel or danger proposed Downs Credit Enhancement Agreement. And it...
If you could also add to that, I believe there needs to be language that says that we will only come back for the purposes of adjournment. We'll come back to public.
Can't we adjourn?
We can adjourn, but I think it has to be in the motion.
I think the law requires you adjourn the meeting in public session.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
From the conference room.
Conference room, yep.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
I...